Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays to you and welcome to the work session for Monday, December 12th for the Bladensburg Town Council. We are now called to order. I do want to know Councilmember Rout will be joining a little bit later in the meeting, but did want to let you all know that she is planning to join. She just had a schedule conflict right at 5:30, so we'll see her shortly. We'll move on with the agenda with item number two, which is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I."
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 Any nays? The "I" s have it. Thank you so much. The next item is the approval of the November 14th work session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Also moved.
Moved by Councilmember Blunt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McBride. Any corrections, edits, or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I."
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 Any nays? The "I" s have it. Thank you so much. We do not have any appearances scheduled for today, so we'll move right on to old business, beginning with Bosswick House update by Mr. Charnovich, our interim town administrator and town clerk.
Uh, thank you, Mayor James. Um, so a refresher for everyone. From last meeting and also those who may not have seen the last month's meeting. At, uh, at last month's meeting, we, uh, Mr. Parker, Sam Parker from Amen Trust, attended our council meeting and gave a, um, update on, uh, two projects that, um, are, uh, have been in the planning phases for the, uh, Bosswick House now. Repair of the buttress as well as some archaeological work that has to happen in conjunction with, uh, with the buttress, uh, work. And, um, at the, at last month's meeting, uh, the town council, uh, voted to authorize, uh, funding, uh, in, in a total amount of approximately $117,000, uh, for these two projects. Um, due to the fact that, um, I, I take a step back, uh, Amen Trust, um, was part of the, uh, the bid process as far as obtaining the bids with an architect. And the, the bids came in and the funding was over what they anticipated. Uh, so they requested that the town of Bladensburg, uh, uh, help and assist to help pay for, um, uh, these, these two projects. So, uh, and it did, in addition tonight, we have, um, on the regular meeting, there'll be an ordinance amendment, um, that will include, uh, that particular, uh, uh, funding, um, uh, funding allocation. Um, so, uh, since, since last meeting, I've been in touch with Sam on the archaeological part of it. Uh, for, just as a refresher, uh, the archaeological, archaeological piece needs to be done, uh, prior to, uh, the, the buttress work. Um, and I'll be, uh, uh, continuing to work with them on, um, the, the administrative part of this, the contractual part and everything like that to, to, to make, to make sure that the project, um, gets, gets completed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that, uh, update, Mr. Charnovich. Any questions for him at this time? I know we did spend a good amount of time last meeting discussing it, but again, the, um, budget ordinance will be, uh, read in the, the seven o'clock meeting for today. Uh, the next item, Mr. Charnovich.
I'm sorry, I was trying to raise my hand. Just real quick, I just like for Mr. Charnovich, when he talk about the, um, the funding, but it is with reimbursement to the, some reimbursements to the town.
Yeah, uh, great, great, great point, Councilmember Brown. Um, the, uh, the archaeological piece will be reimbursed. So, uh, to be a little more specific on that, approximately $19,000 of that, uh, is the, uh, arche- archaeological, uh, work that I think Amen Trust received the grant for, and we are, we're fronting that cost, which will be, uh, reimbursed, um, uh, to the, to the town. Um, the, that is your question?
Great, thank you, uh, Mr. Charnovich. Definitely. And next, we want to move forward with the second item under old business, which is the Pepco pilot program for our EV charging stations.
But, thank you, Mayor. Um, so, uh, the, uh, the council and everyone should be excited to hear, I guess, that, uh, this, this project is, um, by, almost completed and finally coming to fruition, uh, after, after quite a while. Um, uh, glad that it's, it's moving forward. Um, if you, at, at the town hall, in fact, the, the stations have been installed. They are not charged and ready to be, um, used yet. And last I heard, the, the, the 57th Avenue site was under construction. Maybe, maybe I should, maybe I should take a, take a step back, sorry, since we have the, have the 10 minutes. So for those, uh, who, uh, who may be, uh, watching the meeting, uh, there are two sites where Bladensburg is joining Pepco, um, to, to, uh, for pilot, pilot program for electric charging stations for vehicles. One is in our town hall parking lot, and the other one is on 57th Avenue, uh, by the, um, community center. Um, and the, the, the one, uh, is, has been completed, the actual construction. And then I think that the one on 57th Ave is either close to being done or now is done. Um, so that, that's, that's where that's at. So it's a, a great, a great environmental initiative that, that Bladensburg, uh, decided to take on for that, uh, it's a way of the future. So, um, I'm happy to report on that and, uh, any, any questions or comments?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that update, Mr. Charnovich. And of course, once they are complete, would love to work with the council on their schedules and staff to have a ribbon cutting. Um, and then also just to clarify, so there will be two on the 57th Avenue site and three at the town hall site with one of the three being the fast charging stations. So just want to make sure, I know it's been a while since we had Pepco come and share about the specific charger types that we'll have. So just wanted to put that refresher out there. Uh, Councilmember Brown, you had a question or comment?
Yes, just real quick, and the charging, um, will, will, will this be open, the charging stations be open to all town residents? Or just people, just drivers generally?
So my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Charnovich or members of the council who may recall, but these are open and public. So if someone, um, is a resident, they have access to them. But if someone, um, is passing, uh, through, let's say they're going to the new library and they stop and want to charge, they would have access to. Staff are actually working to put signs up though, that actually govern the rules. So someone couldn't just leave their vehicle parked there and charging for an extended period of time. But if that doesn't help, we can, um, and if staff doesn't have more details, we can also circle back to our Pepco contact for more specifics on that. Councilmember Brown. Okay, Councilmember Rout?
Thank you, Mayor James. Um, I concur with what you said, and I also have an added piece, is that there's a small charge that Pepco will charge the person. Um, you have to have an account through them and it's, it's like a, it's like a dollar. It's very, very minimal, very small. Um, and you'd have to, you know, sign up. Uh, Mount Rainier has a charging station. Um, and that was the first one that I visited. So if we want to, you know, maybe do a site visit or, you know, go on a little council field trip, um, we could go over to Mount Rainier and, you know, just see how it works.
Thank you for those comments and also for the reference point, Councilmember Rout, in terms of the, the nominal charge, that's usually assessed when you use those stations. Um, and so if anyone's interested, Councilmember Rout has extended herself for a field trip. Or, um, you know, feel free to just email our colleagues over in Mount Rainier. Um, and then in the meantime, I'll also, um, just contact the mayor over there to see if she could share the text that was put on their signs, just because it may be helpful for the staff as you're thinking about the appropriate signage to put up at each of the stations here. Any other comments or questions? Oh, Mr. Charnovich?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to add one piece. Uh, I was hoping to, um, I reached out to the project manager last week. I was hoping to have a, a sense of when they were, she was planning, they were planning on, uh, making the stations live, but unfortunately, I just want to point out that I did not hear back from her as of today. Um, hopefully that also didn't get muddy into my memo migration, but we'll, we'll keep plugging along. Um, but I, I did not see a response from her. So as soon as I know when they plan on, um, uh, having the stations go live, I will inform, uh, circulate and inform the council and staff and everyone else.
Perfect. Thank you so much, uh, for at least trying to reach out. I know they're busy trying to wrap up year-end projects. So hopefully by midweek, we get a response back from them. So we have a better sense of when those, uh, will be available and fully charged and ready to go. Any other, oh, Councilmember Blunt?
Question. So there is a time limit to use the charger? Cause I know my daughter, when she went to charge a Tesla, it took her like seven hours. So I don't know how it worked, but there is a time limit. So we put ours up or is?
We will have to put some sort of restriction, Councilmember Blunt, because otherwise, especially, um, with the example that Chief gave of the situation they ran into in Tacoma Park. Actually, Chief, do you mind sharing the experience that you shared about, um, your previous agency?
Excuse me, Mayor, just real quick, from a timekeeping perspective, we have four more, about four more minutes left on this topic.
Yep, um, thank you. Watching too.
So, uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and colleagues, uh, and community. So yes, Mayor, you, you're correct. So without my last employment, we had them and we ran into a problem where people were, you know, especially the cab drivers. They were leaving their cars parked overnight. No one else could use it. And they would come back like 10 o'clock in the morning when they were in, in cab some more. And so we had to wind up putting signs up, and as long as the sign is six feet, erected six feet, um, high, which is a legal regulation, we can enforce the, the, uh, the penalties for that. And what we did, we put up a four-hour limit, um, for the charging. Um, so I'm not sure, I, I heard, uh, Councilmember Blunt say that it was like seven hours. I'm not sure what kind of charging station it was, but ours was pretty, pretty fast. It didn't take eight hours to, to, to charge a vehicle, um, over there at that time. Uh, so, yeah, we had to put the restriction in because people would abuse the system. And theirs was, it's at the time, I don't know what it is now, but it was, it was free. Uh, they didn't charge anything for it.
Thank you for that, Chief. Councilmember Blunt, does that help in terms of the? I'm sorry, you're muted.
Sorry. You know, I was wondering, cause my daughter, I said, you want to stay in your car? She made a bed in the back of her car and she spent the night at the charging station. There was officers there, but I think, so that, I guess, it happens, I don't know. I was just wondering. She said it was free in southeast. So, I don't know.
Gotcha. And I think because, um, code enforcement officer Reinhardt is on the call, Chief, if, um, if possible, if you all could put some recommended, uh, regulations together that you recommend having on the signs from a code enforcement perspective and just circulating those to the town to give us a chance to offer any sort of input, I think, or just to see it, you know, before it's posted on a sign. I think that would be helpful.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, sir. And so with that, um, that concludes our, uh, discussion on, our discussions on old business. So we'll move forward with new business with respect to Live Well Day Health Fair. Councilmember Rout?
Thank you, Mayor James. Um, colleagues, um, town staff and town residents, uh, we were invited to a Live Well Day Health Fair, um, to basically just to participate. Um, this was an email, um, for us to publicize as it relates to health wellness. It'll be taking place in the town of Chevrolet. Um, they did this prior to, um, COVID. Um, and of course it stopped because of COVID, and so the organizer was trying to bring it back. Um, and so I just took a special interest just with, um, being a mental health advocate, um, and a health advocate. Um, I do think this is something that we should just sign on to do. It's not going to cost us anything. Um, the only thing is, uh, for us to promote it on our, uh, social media platforms. Um, and so I just thought it was a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rout. Um, so I think, given this is really administration, administrative in terms of the follow-up, so if, um, everyone is fine with it, I think, Mr. Charnovich, you can move forward with just promoting it through the normal channels, the e-blast and so forth. A copy of the flyer is listed there and it does indicate it's a Chevrolet, um, event, but it doesn't require council action. So, and there's no cost to the town from the materials that were provided. Uh, Councilmember Brown, I wanted to bring you in. I see your hand.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm not going to comment on everything, but thanks. Just, just real quick, because it is a Chevrolet event. I mean, we can promote it. Like I said, it should go to the administration side, but it doesn't say anything about Bladensburg, but we just.
Exactly. If, if we're just supporting our neighboring community and we can encourage our residents to attend, but really it's just an administrative item in terms of our involvement. Yeah. And of course, if anyone's able to attend and get out there, please do. Councilmember Rout?
Thank you, Mayor James. I was actually looking for us to consider partnering or putting our name, promoting it, um, as, as, as this being like a co-sponsor event, which is, I mean, we get invited to things all the time. Um, and I did think that it was that important to bring it to the town council for council action, um, since we were, um, invited. So that was the purpose of bringing it, um, to, uh, my colleagues today. Thank you.
Thank you. So it sounds like, um, just from discussion so far, everyone is okay just having it promoted. Um, we're not contributing financially to it, but it is good to support our neighbor and communities just as they support us. So again, thank you, Councilmember Rout, for that. Uh, seeing no other hands, we're going to continue on with the agenda to the new server proposal from our town IT consultant. Uh, I don't believe NTI is on, so Mr. Charnovich, are you handling, okay, the discussion? Okay.
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you. Uh, so, it was, uh, it was recently brought to my attention, um, that the, uh, town's entire, this is separate from the email migration we've, we've been chatting about here, uh, this evening, uh, separate topic. Um, the, uh, town's server for all of its, uh, IT stuff, um, is approximately 10 years old and is, is, um, incredibly low on, on, on storage capacity. Um, and it's also my understanding that, uh, uh, NTI provided a bid to the town about a year ago, uh, to upgrade the server. Um, un- unfor- unfortunately, I, I guess, uh, you know, short, short story, I, I, I was in a different capacity at that point for the organization, so I don't know what, what all occurred there. Um, but now we're one year later and as I understand it, um, now things are, uh, even getting, uh, more difficult to manage on the IT side of things. So the, the pro- the procurement of this is over, um, uh, over, over $10,000. So that's why it's, it's before us tonight. Um, and also are, I, I'm not sure how many years NTI has been here, but they know our system the best. They know what we need. They're here weekly, sometimes more often. And, uh, their recommendation is something that I think we need to do. Um, and also it, it's a capital investment and, you know, Vito can, Mr. Tannelli could also speak on that. And, uh, I might, I might even ask, uh, Chief Collington to tou- to touch base too on, on his department with respect to the types of networking stuff happening and, uh, uh, you know, well, as we, as we install more programs and more things that are needed to, to help all of our departments, uh, we, we need space. We need space on the server. I think the whole server, uh, was, uh, NTI advised me is like eight, I think eight gigabytes or something like that, which is not a lot of space at all. Uh, not at all, especially when with cell phones these days are, I think more than that. Um, but, uh, so that, that's kind of the overarching summary. I don't know if any other department heads want to touch in, Mr. Tannelli or, uh, Chief Collington, uh, before turning it over to the, uh, to the, to the, to the council. But, uh, I think it's something that's certainly needed after 10 years and just, and as things are expanding, uh, it's, the, the, the show must go on. So, um, uh, that's, that's, that's the bottom line. Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. T- I'm sorry, Mr. Charnovich. Mr. Tannelli, you were leaning in a little bit.
Yeah, so, I was gonna say, this has been, uh, I, I've talked to NTI about it, I think for like the last three years. And, um, it's, Mr. Charnovich said, I mean, it's aged, I mean, 10, I think it's ever really 11 years old at least, um, going on its 12th year, and that's old for a server. I mean, it's, servers last multiple years. But in the meantime, we, uh, we've changed out hard drives, added memory, added new power supply. Um, I mean, we, we keep doing internal upgrades, but we're at the point where you can't upgrade it anymore because you're still on the old architecture. So you can only upgrade it so, so much based on the old architecture and everything. And, and now we, I mean, we have a lot more staff now. I mean, back then, you know, when we had the server, you know, our fax, our fax number was still on, on everything. So, I mean, it's, you know, so it's, it's, it's changed somewhat. So, um, and as Rich said, it's, it's a capital expense. Um, you know, I, I always put it out there, you know, for the one-time expenditures like this, I think ARPA is a very good candidate for, you know, for these one-time purchases, but that's up to the mayor and council. But, you know, um, unless you want to find money in the current operating budget, but, um, I'm a fan of like, you know, the one-time stuff. Put it over to ARPA. Um, but that's just me, so.
Thank you, Mr. Tannelli. Chief, did you want to give us some insights as well?
Yeah, uh, so Mayor, just along with every, what, uh, Mr. Charnovich and Mr. Tannelli just mentioned, I, I was actually going to mention the, the countless repairs that we keep making to the server. Uh, and not just that, like when we get new programs, we've forced now to buy separate computer CPUs to run different software when we could all, it should all be running through the, the same server. Our 911 system and, uh, radio system is connected to that server. And, and it has gone down and failed and for, uh, evident, evidentiary purposes, uh, that can be crucial when we have, uh, people, uh, from the state's attorney's office requesting, um, evidence for 911 tapes and things like that. And we have to tell them that, uh, it, it was lost on the server. You know, so it's just inadequate at this point. And, uh, we've tried everything we could to keep, um, patching it up. Like I said, uh, like I mentioned, put more CPUs, buy computer CPUs and putting it in there. And we just running everything. It looks like an octopus in there. So if you come over and, and take a look, you know, you guys can see, it's in bad shape.
Thank you for that additional information and Chief Collington. So, um, if there are no other additions from the staff in terms of painting this bleak picture of these 11, almost 12-year-old servers, I want to, um, open it up to questions from my colleagues in the last three minutes that we have here. Councilmember Brown?
I'm really, I'm really not going to comment on everything, but this is going to be really, really quick. Um, yes, our systems are antiquated. We need to come into the 21st century. Uh, that's definitely supported, you know, by the technology. My only question that I have with this is the estimated labor is $6,250. So there's no breakdown there to say, hey, here, here the amount of hours, here's, here's the hourly cost. So, so that's just a question for me in terms of how do you get to the $66,230? And we may not be able to answer, you know, like right now, but would like, would answer.
Yeah, great point, Councilmember Brown. Um, can Mr. Charnovich or anyone else on the team provide any details? And if not, is it possible to just reach back out to NTI for, um, just a breakdown? I know it's estimated, could be lower. They tend to, tend to quote worst-case scenario. But, um, if you could provide us with some information, that would be helpful.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm taking some notes now and I can do that. No problem.
Thank you. And then as soon as, uh, Mr. Tannelli mentioned ARPA, my eyes went to Councilmember Brown because she's the one who's always like, "Arpa, um, want to get thoughts from the council if there would be agreement, uh, using that for a one-time capital cost?" Cause it, it's not in the budget. I know there's some capital improvement dollars in there, but this definitely was not anticipated. Councilmember Brown?
Yes, I think we should go to the operating budget. I don't think we should use the ARPA money. That's, but that's my, um, that's my take on it.
Thank you.
But I would definitely, you know, listen.
Yeah.
Whatever the, the team decides.
And then if not, you're going to say, "Arpa." Okay. Uh, thoughts, Councilmember McBride? Oh, you're muted, sorry.
It's fine with me. We can use the capital budget or ARPA.
Yeah, if we, I'm thinking if we want to go ahead and move to a vote tonight, my recommendation would just be go ahead, um, and pull it from ARPA. It's a one-time expense. But again, I defer to you guys and want to get your input. So at least when we go to vote, we're all on the same page in the seven o'clock meeting. So, thank you for that, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Blunt?
I don't think we should pull it from ARPA either.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Rout?
I am willing to go with the majority, but I do think that we need to consider using ARPA for things like this. This is why it exists. Um, but I'm willing to, you know, yield to the majority. It's a one-time cost. There's not going to be like change orders or go back. Um, and really for like systematic upgrades for services for the town, which this is connected to our 911 system, um, we should consider this one-time cost.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Rout. Um, I was of the same mindset, just in the interest of time. Um, unless, Mr. Tannelli, if you can, between now and the next meeting, provide some savings. I mean, we're so early on in the budget. Um, fiscal year started July 1st. So we've got one complete quarter down. So we don't have a true assessment yet of where things are going to be under or over since we're kind of not fully at that midway point. So, um,
And I always worry about too, the winter months. I mean, we got hit pretty hard a couple of years with, uh, weather-related emergencies, which hit the budget. Um, I feel like I have more breathing room after like, uh, the end of February, if anything. Um, that's just my take on, but I mean, I'll take a good direction from the council. I mean, it's, you know.
Yeah, and Mr. Tannelli, I'm also thinking about from past years, when it came to major capital purchases, you're, the, um, the trend has always been, from your standpoint, not to spend before March. Just because at that point in time, now we've only got a few months left in the fiscal year. So we have a better sense of where we're going to be under and over versus now, it's still a bit early. So, um, uh, oh, sorry, Councilmember Brown, I see your hand.
Thank you. My apologies. I said, and also, uh, Mr. Charnovich, when, when we're looking at the specs for the server, can we look at terabytes? Cause I see a lot of gigabytes here, but I think, you know, if we're going to, you know, do something, it needs to be, seems to me it needs to be robust in terabytes. Um, but that's just my little input.
Yeah, appreciate that feedback. And then the time did expire. So Councilmember Rout, last word.
Okay, just quickly, we were considering a budget amendment. So I don't know if Mr. Charnovich can like, just throw it on over if, to, you know, please everyone from the operating budget, if that's the pleasure of the council, just an idea.
Yeah.
And I agree with terabytes, because we're going to grow, because we're going to get bigger. Watch.
Exactly, exactly. So, um, definitely that point is definitely well-taken. And then with respect to the, uh, budget amendment that we have to adopt tonight, Mr. Charnovich, is it possible to quickly, um, turn over, I guess, Mr. Tannelli, uh, from the operating budget where this could come from at this point? uh, from the operating budget where this could come from at this point? I think Blunt, Brown, and McBride are feeling that it should be taken from operating budget. I'm not passionate either way. I just feel like it's quickest just to say from ARPA, we got $4.8 million, and these are the kinds of, uh, purposes that money is intended for. So we don't have to spend the time between now and the seven o'clock meeting trying to figure out where to pull from.
Mr. Tannelli, me, me or you?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Rich. I mean, if you think we can do it tonight, um, I can, uh.
Well, yeah, well, I think the, the short answer is yes, we can do it. I could add, with, with, within the ordinance, there's three categories of transfer. As you, when you read the ordinance, I'm sure you saw that. And I would just need to add a fourth category of transfer. Um, and then we can, you know, document that for the record, input that onto the ordinance that's posted out on the, on the board, uh, and in the town hall. So we can do that. But then the question for us, Mr. Tannelli, is, uh, you know, where, where are we pulling from, uh, for the, for the item? Unfortunately, as, uh, that's part of the reason why I mentioned that this came up a year ago, because unfortunately, the, the foresight didn't happen in the budget. It would have probably made our, our lives easier, and unfortunately it didn't. So, you know, now we must adapt. So, um, uh, it could be done. We just gotta figure out where we're gonna pull it from.
Um, since we haven't hired a, uh, budgeted Public Works Director, um, which hasn't been hired yet, um, I'm gonna pull it from the compensation from Public Works. Purnell's not on here, so, uh, we're good. No, I'm kidding. But, um, um, because.
At least call him between the meetings to have the conversation. But this 16,000, you know, I think you're right, that, that could work for sure. And it's not taking away from something that we need to expend, um, since that position wasn't filled.
So would this be part of, so is this an emergency amendment or part of the existing, or part of the, the existing amendment or?
So what we're proposing, or what Councilmember Rout was suggesting, is that we add it on to, sorry, I'm still flipping, apologize if you hear the papers, but adding it to the, uh, budget ordinance that we were looking to adopt tonight. So adding, um, an item number four to include the $16,814 in here and just indicating that it's a transfer from, in this case, as you suggested, the Public Works Department, uh, compensation line. Would you be able to flip that around before the seven o'clock meeting? I know we're after six already, but we'll move through the rest of this agenda pretty quickly. So there should be time in between to, um.
Yeah, I can.
Revise it. Okay.
And so Rich can, uh, keep going to meetings. Is that all right, Rich? Or, or you might have sent me the, I, I think you sent me the, the word draft anyway.
Yeah, the, the version we have is the draft that I had sent you, I think, on Friday.
Okay, all right.
So if you, if you could do that, I'd, I'd appreciate it while we continue with the work session.
All right, go ahead. I'll.
Just not, not knock on the wall through the door if you need me. More, more's code.
All right, I got it.
Perfect. Great teamwork. Thank you all for that discussion and the recommendations. Uh, at this time, we'll move on. We have two items with respect to letters of support. So Mr. Tarnovich, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item I think should be relatively straightforward, I believe. So approximately a year ago, um, I recall this was on the agenda regarding, um, a walkable watershed, walkable watershed project. I said that three times fast. Uh, that, that, um, uh, Bladensburg is a part of. We, we, we voted to be involved with other port towns for that project. So the reason this is on the agenda is that, um, Ms. Kokalas, uh, reached out to us because they're trying to add another piece on to the puzzle, I guess, to this, to this walkable watershed regarding education and stewardship that's gonna go along with it. And I just wanted to, for the sake of transparency, I wanted to make sure that, that, you know, the council saw this and that everything was, was, was clear, that, 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 uh, we'd be signing off on this. There's really no, there's no financial ask or anything of that nature, but I just wanted to kind of let everybody know that, um, uh, that this was, we were approached with this and that, um, I, unless there's any, any objections, I, I, I can, uh, proceed with, uh, send a letter of support.
Great, thank you, Mr. Tarnovich. And it does make perfect sense because it gives some funding so that we're not just working on the walkable watershed and addressing the stormwater needs, but actually having a piece that addresses community education and engagement. Oftentimes, we do these projects, but don't do the best job maybe engaging the residents. And so this would help with that educational piece. And maybe even, um, working in a piece where we can engage our students as well. So I think it's a great idea, but just want to give the, uh, rest of the team a chance to offer any sort of input. Okay, I'm watching your head, Councilmember Blunt. Okay. All right, Councilmember Brown, okay. Councilmember Rout, any thoughts or questions about the letter of support?
No, I, I'm, I'm full, in full support.
Okay, Councilmember McBride?
I concur, full support.
All right, perfect. Thank you all for that input. And then, Mr. Rich, back to you for the letter of support for a sensitive issue here for those of us who commute to the district on Bladensburg Road.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, uh, I must say, when this, when this hit my, hit my inbox in my desk, I did not know much about this topic. Uh, but for the, for, for the, um, uh, thank everybody on the call. Uh, the town administrator of Cottage City reached out to me asking for the support of all the poor towns, including Bladensburg, uh, related to, um, this area of the Dueling Creek Bridge that I think they are trying to work with the State Highway Administration to, um, uh, uh, fix up. It's in need of disrepair and it's in poor condition. And they're, they're seeking assistance and support from, uh, kind of, kind of leveraging their, um, leveraging all their ducks in a row to try and get support to fix this bridge. Um, I did try and find a picture to provide to the council, uh, but I, uh, I, I heard back from their town administrator today, unfortunately. Uh, Mr. Gray, are you able to allow me to, uh, share my screen if I have time? I could pull up a picture that the town administrator sent me today. Um, although, although Mayor, the way you explain, I think everybody's familiar with, familiar with it. So, um, maybe I don't need to, but.
I'm just curious. Wow, you're getting ready to pull that up. Does anyone else commute to the district, um, along Bladensburg Road? Councilmember Rout, do you? Brown, yes, okay.
You're good.
Oh, thank you, sir.
We have so many residents that commute though, so, as well.
Exactly.
Are you able to see, are you able to see that or no, everyone?
No.
Uh, Mr. Gray, it says host disabled participant screen sharing. I get a message whenever I click it.
Yeah, I missed, the, the names changed when people start talking, so it switches. So you're good to go.
Thank you, sir. Here we go. Can we see that?
Yes, we can see it.
So that's the image of what the town administrator sent me when I asked her to send a photo of the, of what they're trying to do. And I guess, I'm not sure how long it's been this way, but it sounds like it's been this way for a while. And, uh, their, their community has major concerns about the, the way that it's, that it's conditioned, so.
For years, it's been that way for years. Six, seven, eight, 10, 50, 100 million years.
Oh, my.
A hundred million? Thank you for that perspective, Councilmember Brown.
That's a lot of years.
That's a lot of years.
And I mean, it means too long.
Yeah, I totally agree. And it is painful. Every time we have that traffic bottleneck right there, I'm just trying to pass through. So I just want to go around the room and make sure I saw heads nodding. But can you all just like say, yes, you agreed to support the letter or? Okay, Councilmember Blunt, I see your hand. McBride, yes.
Yeah, I agree to support the letter and maybe something else in consideration is right across the street. It's not blocking that lane, but that, but that pedestrian bridge is closed as well. So residents have to drive out in the street because they have, they have one, right adjacent right across from me. So I don't, I don't, I don't know why they're not addressing both of them, because you can't, you can't cross on that side either.
Yeah.
So that's just, you know, something.
That's something we can follow up with Comar Manor on, since this letter of support is just for Cottage City. I'm not sure if Comar Manor, they may be working on it on their side as well. But, um, this is just addressing, uh, the portion that is, um, within the city.
This side of the street is in comp, this.
Cottage City.
Cottage, okay.
Correct, yeah. But it looks as though everyone's, um, on the same page in terms of supporting the letter, Mr. Tarnovich. Thank you for this image, which makes me shudder as I think about the morning commute this week. Um, I know our time has expired. Councilmember Rout, you have one final comment?
Yeah, do we know who appoint person at SHA that they're working through? Because we can like, can we, since we're signing on, our brick in front of the library is dangerous. And, um, so that's also SHA on 450, right in front of our new library. The brick that's inside of the road, like in the crosswalk, there's like missing brick pieces. It definitely is dangerous. So I don't know if we can like throw that in there because it's 450, you know?
So, yeah, um, Mr., Mr. Ri, or Officer Reinhardt, is that something you could help us with? I know that was not necessarily on the agenda, but it is a, a concern for residents as well. Um, if you could just help us figure out who we need to reach out to in order to ask for some, um, repaving with the, the brickwork in that crosswalk. Um, or it may already be on the horizon, just because they're finishing the library. They may, may want to do that piece first before branching out and fixing it. But if you could just help us, um, we would appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am, I'll take care of that.
Thank you so much. Um, and thank you all for the fruitful discussion there about the, uh, letter of support for Dueling Creek Bridge in Cottage City. The next item we have on the agenda is the Metropolitan Washington Council of Government Appointments for 2023. They did reach out and ask that we get them our, uh, committee assignments as quickly as possible. So Rich did let them know we were meeting today and would talk through them in tonight's agenda. Mr. Tarnovich, do you want to walk us through, uh, the discussion for the committee assignment?
Uh, sure, I can, Mayor James. Bear with me one moment. Drowning in paper over here. All right. So, uh, Mayor, maybe a way to do this could be, um, just trying to think of the most efficient, effective way. Perhaps we could start with the, the page that was provided in the packet that has the 2022 appointments. There, by a chance, see that, had the yellow? Oh, yeah, there we are. Thank you, Mayor. So, so that, that one, that one already shows our 2022, um, uh, appointments. And maybe we could just use that as a framework, um, to set up our 2023s, if there are any changes or whatnot. Is that, that maybe makes sense?
Good idea. So you want to start with region forward?
Yeah, sure. Uh, so that one's me, yay. But I, I think I, I think I mentioned to you on the phone, Mayor, that, um, uh, I was appointed to this particular committee last year, but I will say that, um, I, I did not hear from anyone about the committee. So I don't know what happened with that committee, but, um, I did, did want to point out that I, I did not attend any meetings because I was not reached out to, 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 to attend any. Uh, so, um, I'm happy to stay on it. That, that particular topic interests me. Um, regional development, regional, uh, region-wide thinking, um, things of that nature is, is an area that I'm, uh, versed in and, and I do enjoy it. So, um, I would be willing to stay on that unless other, unless, certainly if the town council members want to be on it, I will step aside for a town council member or you, Mayor. Uh, but if not, I'm, I'm glad to be on it. Hopefully they contact me again, uh, hopefully they contact me, period, this year.
I think it's worth mentioning that when you return the list back to them to just, things can happen. Um, you know, human error, but just letting them know you didn't hear from anyone this year and you're excited to be a part and just want to make sure that someone follows through with you.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think la, last time at this point last year, I was, I was here about a month. So it was, I, I just started here about a month before this or month, month and a half. So I was, my feet were very, very new in the fire.
Got it. And then, so for Human Services Poly, Policy Committee, we have, uh, Councilmember Blunt and alternate is Chief Collington. Um, you want to stay on, Councilmember? Okay, Chief, are you willing to stay on as well? Okay. Alrighty. And then for CPC, I am, uh, on that committee. Unless anyone wants to knock me off, I do enjoy that. Um, I'll cross through the alternate, since that person is no longer employed with the town. Um, but if anyone else is interested in participating, happy to have you on there too. Um, don't jump all at once. Chesapeake Bay and Water Resources Policy. We have Councilmember Brown there with Officer Reinhardt. Are you all good with that assignment or are you just done? Okay, heads are shaking. Yes, perfect. And then Food and Agricultural Regional Member Policy Committee, Councilmember McBride, how are you feeling there?
I'll stay.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be her alternate. I think I was, I think I was delivering a baby when you guys were choosing me.
Yep, yep. You had a busy night that night in 2021.
One here. Uh, I was a little busy, a little.
But I think that is, yeah, that is good. So we have them all, um, firmed up. So, Mr. Tarnovich, did you capture all of that?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, uh, but I believe the only change was the last one for the alternate for Councilmember, uh, Rout to add her to the food and agriculture. That the only change from last year? Or enter, 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 remove the alternate.
Yep.
And the climate energy.
Exactly.
Those two items.
Yep.
And the community service. Which one did you have me on?
We have you down, Chief, for Human Services Policy Committee. Is that still good?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. All right, so, Mr. Tarnovich, if you don't mind, just circling back, uh, with them. And one thing that I do appreciate about COG is how organized they are. They try to hold the meetings at the same frequency. So like with CPC, it's every other month. Um, but the other chart that's included in the package just has the general meeting dates and times. So you can at least plug them on your calendar early, um, just to make sure you don't forget. Because I know we all get busy, um, during the course of the year. But again, Mr. Tarnovich, thank you for circling back on that. Um, so we have come to the end of our agenda for tonight's work session. So if there are no other announcements, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Rout, is there a second?
Second?
Seconded by Councilmember McBride. Any discussion or anything else for the bit of the order? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. We adjourned and we'll see you back at 7:00 PM for the council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.